for purple mountain majesty above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, and crown thy good with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea. Oh, beautiful, for spacious skies, for amber waves of grain, for purple mountain majesty above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, and crown thy good with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea.
With Commissioner's meeting in order, let me know for the record, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is here on the north wall. There's an automatic defibrillator in the back of the chambers. I'd like to note, if you're only trying to get by, could you please silence it or turn it off with that? Let's say pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now call to order the Board of Equalization meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Duda. Commissioner Kraft. Commissioner Morgan is absent, and Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, March 27, 2018. Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, April 17, 2018, as a day for hearing on the certified assessment corrections. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Motion passes, all present voting yes.
Item C is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to make a comment on any item of the Board of Equalization that's not officially listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions. We have D, E, F, G, H, and I. What's the will of the board? There's a motion to approve and adjourn by Commissioner Boyle, and a second by Commissioner Kraft to approve items D, E, F, G, H, and I. Please vote.
Motion passes, all present voting yes.
We'll now call to order Douglas County Board of Corrections meeting. Roll call.
Excuse me. Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Duda. Commissioner Kraft. Commissioner Morgan is absent, and Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one is approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, March 13, 2018. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Do I? Motion passes, all present voting yes.
Item two, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for anyone to comment on a corrections-related item that is not officially listed on the board's agenda. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none. Item three is the report from the Director of Corrections, Dr. Foxall.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Before you have the report for Department of Corrections, dated April 10, this is for March of 2018. Start off initially with the construction project. Construction, phase one of the construction project is complete, and work is estimated to begin on the 1976, or the old side of the facility, on or about July of 2018. So, we have all our housing units back, and all of our housing units are open, and our counts are up still. Closure number one, Administrative Services section, following the ninth month into the fiscal year of 1718, we're under budget a little bit, which is good news. And closure number two, Community Corrections and In-House Programs. Community Corrections, a committee of the Criminal Justice Stakeholders is currently working on ways to increase options available to court, to the court for pretrial release supervision. Those meetings are scheduled to continue during, during the month of April. Corrections is planning its first-ever formal graduation for individuals who achieve their GED while at DCDC. Past graduates have been invited to celebrate and be recognized for their accomplishments on June 1 of 2018. So, I want to put that date saver out there for you early. We have an upwards of 20 people coming in for a formal GED graduation as a result of their efforts while incarcerated. More details will be provided as the date approaches, and following that initial June 1 ceremony, we'll have periodic ceremonies to acknowledge this very special achievement of achieving a GED. As you know, it's extremely important in reentry, successful reintegration to society. So, we're very pleased to provide that opportunity. Vicky Maka is at Region 6 and stepping-up coordinator, has shadowed several corrections staff during the month of March as part of her efforts to assist with the integration of behavioral health and criminal justice entities. So, we continue to integrate with the stepping-up effort in hopes of addressing some of the mental health issues that are ongoing with the inmate population. 24/7 alcohol sobriety program had another strong month with 51 admissions. The month concluded with a high count of 174 on the program. There were 2,917 breath tests completed, six were positive for alcohol use. There were 11 no-shows for testing, and the overall compliance rate was approximately 99.5%. Forty-three individuals were monitored for a total of 1,084 scram days, and there were no, there was one no-show violation, one tampering violation, no alcohol violations, and the overall scram compliance rate was 99.8%. 355 drug tests were administered. There were 13 drug test violations, no positive drug patch violations, and 10 no-show violations. Work police admitted 49 individuals last month, and those individuals contributed 491 hours of community service. House arrest admitted 80 individuals last month, and the Range Tree Assistance, or RAP, program admitted 31 individuals last month. Community Corrections In-House Program, 60 individuals were admitted to the corrections programs in the jail. Pretrial services, 255 people were placed on pretrial last month. 1,073 individuals were managed on the program, and 22 individuals were referred for priority prosecution, saving 181 bed days. Moving on to personnel report. We had new hire class 18-1, class of 12 graduated on 16 March, and these officers are working on their own. New hire class 18-2 numbering 11 individuals began on March 26 and will graduate on the 27th of April. That's a typo on my cover. It says March, that is incorrect. It should be 27 April. And candidates are currently being screened for new hire class 18-3, which we anticipate will start shortly after 18-2 graduates. We did have a CIT class graduate on March 16 for providing more training opportunities with regard to mental health. We also promoted 15 new correctional officers, correctional officer one to correctional officer two. We're very happy for those individuals, and we'll be testing again soon for correctional officer two promotions. Closure number five, with regard to our population. We had 1,821 admissions. And as you can see, we are outpacing last year's numbers by quite a bit. Had 1,866 releases. Our high count was 1,336 last month, and our low count was 1,241. Our ADP, average daily population, increased last month to 1,000, 1,282. We pushed the marshal population down, decreased the ICE population down to make room for the increased off-street arrests. Felony population, felony pretrial population decreased a little bit, and, but however, the misdemeanor pretrial population did increase. Female population's still high, but it did increase a little bit, and the high was 187. And again, as I mentioned last month, historically, we ran 9, 10% on the female side. Now, we're 14, 15%, 14, 15% of the population. It's, and again, this is following national trends as well. It's on my what, pair to the meeting this morning. A call from outstate jail director said their female population was way up as well. So, again, this is following a national, national trend. Custodial sanction bed days were 180 last month. Entake screenings, 1,214 on the medical side. We had 461 H&amp;Ps, health and physical assessments, and 278 discharge referrals. This is busy, again, in medical. Closure number seven, with respect to mental health. There were 111 psych assessments. There were 98 mental health assessments, mental health affirmative replacements of 61. Board of Health, Board of Mental Health referrals of three. With regard to referrals to community-based mental health services, outpatient psych and med management, there were 14 of those. Mental health and co-occurring disorder treatment programs, 151 referrals. No mental health therapy referrals last month. There were eight referrals to long-term psychiatric facility, which is a high number as well. But that's, follows recent trend with respect to mental health. Other questions?
Personnel sector. You indicated that you have 12 new hires graduated on 16 March 2018, and these officers are working on their own. And then, 11 began on 26 March 2018 and will graduate 27 March 2018.
As I said, that was a typo on my part. I mentioned that in my presentation. It should've been April.
Where are they in terms of?
Week three.
Sorry?
Week three, in the academy.
So, their graduation date is actually?
April 27.
So, that would be an additional 23 correction officer ones on staff by the, is that correct?
Yes. For class 18-1, and 18-2, and 18-3, we are interviewing for that class now.
Right. So, you know, relative to the chronic staffing shortage that you've noted for us in all your reports, really, where does that put us in terms of coming up to what would be adequate levels of staffing?
We still have a ways to go. We're still 40, 40 short.
Okay. And those candidates that are currently being screened, how many are in that pool?
I don't know yet, sir. There's screening, the screening process is ongoing.
Okay, so, people have made application, is that correct? Okay, how many are in that?
Don't know the applicant pool number yet. Those numbers are still coming in.
I see. When would that be complete?
I would like to start a class in early May. So, we're interviewing now.
And do you have any way of anticipating what the size of that class would be?
I would like 15 to 20. That's, that's, that's a goal I set for, set for myself with each class. 20 would be great.
Right. Based on the numbers?
25 would be even better.
Sure. Based on the numbers that you've outlined for us, though, even if we got that optimum 20 to 25 number, we'd still be in the 15 to 20 short. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, in order to just look ahead a little bit for the balance of 2018, what will we do maybe to try to close that gap in 2018?
Continue aggressive recruits to, or aggressive campaign to recruit, and select candidates for 18-4 and 18-5. We'll continue back-to-back academy classes until we hit our number.
Great. So, you anticipate additional classes in this calendar year?
Absolutely, without a doubt.
In past years, how many classes is, largest number of classes we've had in any, in a year that you can recall?
Typically run two or three.
So, this would be a record year for?
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Boyle.
The, following up on that line of questioning. We had a, we've had a series of meetings about the difficulty in finding applicants, and pretty robust meetings, two and three hours long. Can you tell us, what is the number of, approximately, the number of people who respond to ads or notices that openings are occurring at corrections? It seems like it's relatively high, isn't it?
Well, 200, 250, something like that. Plus, we're rolling older applications as well. But then, there's obviously a vetting process that gets us down to the number of individuals we sit for the class.
Right. Well, I know in the, during that conversation, you even told us that even some former inmates who've just gotten out apply. They do know the place, so, but anyway, they don't qualify, so, we know that. But it's, it is a real effort to try to find people. And we're trying to improve the conditions over there and do a lot of things to appeal. And you're doing a terrific job of making way in that. I wanted to ask you about the, one of the concerns that I'm going to be bringing up, and I know Commissioner Kraft has expressed this too, and I'm sure the other commissioners as well. The number of inmates who are suffering from mental illness. I've heard you say in the past that, you know, we have, we're actually the, one of the highest mental health facilities in numbers in the state because of the inmates who come in who are suffering from, all the way from, you know, panic attacks up to schizophrenia and so forth. What percentage of our inmates have some sort of mental illness, if you can tell us?
55, 60%.
Pardon me?
55 to 60%.
Wow, I thought it was more 40.
Yeah, that went up.
You're, now you're getting into serious mental illness. About 36% of those have serious mental illness.
Okay, well, we're going to be, I know Commissioner Morgan's concerned about it as well, all of us are, but we're going to try to figure out some kind of a mechanism to deal with that, to help you if we can, because that's just something that, it's a terrific burden on you and the staff over there, so, I appreciate that. I have no other questions. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Seeing none, Mark, one more time. You said it three times, but I want to make sure. I know custodial sanction has to do with people from probation coming back. Is that, is that it? Am I right with that?
That's correct.
Okay. Is this, I missed it, or is this the first time that you noted it on a separate line?
It's the second, second and third time that I've noted it, because the numbers are going up.
Okay.
So, when it begins to impact the population, as it has, I'll add it to the board report, so that you know there's a number of different things impacting the population. Custodial sanctions is one of them.
Are you, are they in the regular mix, or are you separating them like in a separate union of just, of unit, or just?
They go into, typically, they will go into the general population, housing unit.
Okay.
They're not separated out.
How's their plan going with probation to try to have that person to work through those?
Had a meeting with regard to that project last week, and make some updates to the contract, and that'll be going forward in the next week or two.
Okay, all right. You kind of got off light, didn't you? Oh, no, no, you didn't, all right. Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I was actually going to ask, along the lines of your question on the custodial sanctions, because we're saying that that is because of LB 605. So, is this number just for this month, or is this from the date that it took effect until now?
I do have an aggregate, I do have an aggregate number. These are, these are days, these are bed, these are bed days for the, for the month. But I can put a, what I haven't done, which I've done with the rest of the population data, is put it into a trend chart, and I can do that for you. So, you can, you can follow the trend up, up there, so, I'll do that next month.
And are these folks, is there any way to analyze whether their length of stay is longer?
Yes, there is.
That it is, there is?
We look at the length, we can do that by length of the, of the incarceration. If it's a 3, 30, or a longer incarceration stay.
And we can also then go back and look at whether or not there's a mental health issue with these folks?
Oh, yes. Absolutely.
Okay.
And another chart that I will be adding to this are violation of probation. Because of 605, there's more people going on probation, because there's more people going on probation, then there's more probation violations and absconds. So, our violation of probation's gone from 20 a couple of years ago to 120. So, that's, that's almost 2,000 units for me.
Well, I'm being a little bit facetious, but yet not. And that is, if we get that number to know what this is costing us, we should build a state.
Okay. You're off light. No further comment. Thank you. Chris.
A tour of the facility is scheduled following the board meeting today. Mark will be driving us all. He has a 12-passenger Jaguar.
Serving lunch.
Thank you.
Thanks, we'll see you later. Thank you, Doc.
Is there motion to adjourn the board corrections? There's a motion by Commissioner Boyle, there's a second, second by Commissioner Kraft. Please vote.
Motion passes, all present voting yes.
We'll now call the Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan is absent, and Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one, minutes and claims. Letter A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, March 27, 2018. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment and processed through Tuesday, April 10, 2018. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Motion passes, all voting yes.
Item two is consent agenda. There are 13 items on the consent agenda. Is there, what's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Kraft, there's a second. Second by Commissioner Duda. Seeing, Commissioner Boyle.
Just a question, not, well, a question about item M. And I mentioned this to Teresa Yuric of the County Attorney's Office. This is not really a, well, it's really a question about the spending on it. It's not a huge item, it's about $80,000. But it, and it does involve autopsies, which we have to perform, of course, and I don't have any objection to any of that. The only thing that caught my eye was the two words after the, we're going to be paying $6,700 a month or more. And so, I asked Teresa about it, and it, it's a guarantee of $6,700, and if there are more autopsies, obviously, we pay. So, it is a set fee. I would like to, to, not to overburden anybody, but I would like to see, Ms. Yuric, if you could tell us, after a period of time, what the actual number of autopsies is, to see if this is a reasonable thing. I've just never seen this that I can remember in a contract. So, it's nothing big, just something I want to see. And I don't have any objection to what you're doing at all.
I can answer that question right now.
Okay.
Commissioner, Don Klein, Douglas County Attorney. We do, I think last year, we did about 470 out-of-county autopsies, and we charge the other counties a user fee of about $250. So, if you, that user fee then will just go to NORSE, and that's going to pay for the, the rent in effect every month. We do about, we average probably at least 40 out-of-county autopsies a month. So, you take that 40 times, 250, it's somewhere around there. It's, you know, it depends. But we do most of the autopsies for all the counties east of Grand Island anymore, here in Douglas County. Physicians Lab, or Dr. Bowen's group does. And we charge a user fee for using Douglas County facilities. So, in effect, that's what's going to pay for our, our rent every month. The county really won't be out any money on this. And I think it's a, I think that's why I think it's such a great thing. It would come out to about $32 a square foot, right, Kyle? Kyle Herbert's here, the executive director of NORSE. For us to have, to rent that space, which is for clinical space, I think is very reasonable. It's a new facility, it's going to give us the storage that we need for bodies in the morgue. It's ups the ante, I think, to 24, a storage space for 24 bodies. It gives us three suites in effect for autopsies, which is, if you looked at our, our current space, it's very antiquated, it needs to be redone. This is a, this is a wonderful thing for us, but that's where that 250 comes from. Is the 250 is our user fee. That's not for Douglas County autopsies, obviously, it's for out-of-county autopsies. And that's the money that will pay for the 6,700 a month. So, that's something I want to talk to Mr. Lorenz about, because it's, it's, if this is budgeted, to figure out how we budget that, so that the 250, that the money that comes in, otherwise, I don't, I don't know if it's, if there's a $6,700 part of my budget, because usually when we get revenue, it comes into the general fund. And I just need to figure out how that, that money's going to be worked, work its way there, and we'll talk about that.
Yeah, I want to make myself real clear. Of all the organizations that we're involved with, there are some really great ones, and you two are a couple of the greatest, so I have no problem with what's going on. It's just the wording was a little unusual in the contract, where it said a dollar amount or more. And so, it's pretty open-ended, not that it's going to go to 6.9 million or anything, but it's just a little unusual. So, I just wanted to be on the record of asking what, you know, why are you doing it? And I'm glad you stepped forward. Appreciate it.
Sure, and that, and that user fee, you know, again, they'll be using the facility, so that's, that 250 will go to that, that facility.
Yeah, this is a wonderful cooperative effort, and I fully support it. So, I appreciate it, but I did have that question.
In anticipation, I just want to thank the board for, for this resolution. And the board, the governing board of NORSE, I think this is a great example of a public-private partnership that's very beneficial to the county. And I think all of our constituents like the work that we do with NORSE. I think everybody's very much in favor of the collaboration and cooperation that we have with them and the work that they do. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Hold up, yeah, legal counsel.
Teresa Yuric, County Attorney's Office. In addition, NORSE has also agreed to handle the pickup and disposal of medical waste. And we, we explored that with NORSE. That was going to be an additional expense to the county, regardless of what new facility we moved into, and it would have been a fairly significant expense. But NORSE was already going to contract with a, you have to, it has to be a special provider to do the pickup and disposal. They were already going to contract with a provider to do that, and agreed to cover the space for the county in that building as well, and take care of that. So, that's something that will change, depending on the number of autopsies that are done. So, that's something that will change, depending on the number of autopsies that are done. And so, it seemed reasonable that the more we use the space, the more they utilize that vendor, that they're going to pick up at their expense, that there should be additional compensation. And so, that was something that we talked about with NORs, and they were very willing to work with us on all of those issues.
Yeah, and there's no other cost, there's no security cost for us, there's no, no other cost involved. They're, they're picking up all, all the other costs, so.
Good, sounds great. Thank you very much.
Wait, wait, Don, let's, so we got, we got a motion and a second?
Yes.
Please vote.
Motion passes, Commissioner Boyle abstains, all other commissioners present voting yes.
Alright, I wanted to handle the vote first, but you made a comment, you're doing everything east of Grand Island. I'm just curious. Is that a result of state backup, or have you always done that?
Well, I think it's because, honestly, my own opinion about this is that because Dr. Bowen, Dr. Lindy, Dr. Yelich, Dr. Justkin, they did such a great job, and our, their fees are so reasonable, that's why the businesses is all, is all coming in here to Douglas County. And their expertise is, is very special in this area, so.
Okay.
Thank you. And the anticipation is, is November for the, this building to be done. If you drive on Lovemore Street, you'll see it right on the south side of the street, about Thirty-Eighth, right, and you can see the, as it's going up. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
The vote we just had, was that just on this item, or was it on the consent?
Consent agenda.
The consent?
As a whole, yes.
And Mike, you abstained because? On, on this item, or?
On several items, I have, complex of interest.
Okay.
I told Mr. Ash what I, what was going on.
Item three is recognition and proclamations. Letter A, recognition of the following county employees retiring. Yvonne Serber retired from the Douglas County Clerk of the District Court's office after seventeen years. Is there a motion to approve item A? It's a motion by Commissioner Borg, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Duda, please vote.
Motion passes, all present voting yes.
We wish Ms. Serber happy retirement. Item B is recognition of the, of county employee Carla Wesley, who is retiring from Douglas County Clerk Controller's Office after twenty years of service to the citizens of Douglas County. Clerk Ash.
Morning, thank you Chair Rogers. I'd like to thank, before I talk about Carla, thank HR. They always, they never have any problem when one of the clerk's office employees is retiring, and I ask them if I can do the resolution, and they're always agreeable to that, so I'd like to thank them for their cooperation. One of the many reasons why I work, why I like working in the clerk's office is because I happen to work with a lot of funny people, good sense of humor, and Carla's up there. She's got a very, a great laugh, a very contagious laugh. I'll, there's, I could think of plenty of times throughout my time in the clerk's office, where I'll hear her laugh, and I'll start laughing, and I have, I have no idea what she's even laughing about. She's always really good with citizens and customers that come in, and I'll, I'll miss seeing those exchanges for being helpful with people. And then just to give an example of how solid of an employee she was, we, when Jane Faust retired, we had an internal promotion in the payroll office to payroll administrator, so that left payroll spot open, and someone from our records division, which is the division Carla works in, they took the role from the payroll office, and then shortly after that happened, we had another person at records, they just left the clerk's office and moved on to other things. So, we were down to just two ti, two full-time employees in the office. And so, for a few weeks, we had a part-time person come in, but for, I don't know, probably five or six weeks, we had only two to three people a day in that division, and that really could have been difficult for us with that short staff. But Carla, along with her, the division administrator, Connie Maorga, they stepped up and never complained, and they were great. They made that transition before we got those spots filled. They made that transition really easy on me and, and everyone else in the office. So, just an example of how great she is. So, here's the resolution. Whereas Douglas County, Nebraska recognizes that its employees are the county's most important asset and resource for providing quality service to the citizens of Douglas County. And whereas on September fifteenth, nineteen ninety-seven, Carla Wesley began her career with Douglas County in the Department of Corrections as a control room operator. And whereas on May eleventh, nineteen ninety-eight, Carla Wesley began working in the Douglas County Commissioners' Office as a receptionist. And whereas on August thirtieth, nineteen ninety-nine, Carla Wesley began working in the Douglas County Clerk Controller's Office as an administrative assistant, a position she held until April fourteen, two thousand and fourteen, when she took the role of records and finance specialist with the Clerk Controller's Office. And whereas consistently throughout her career, Carla Wesley demonstrated a willingness to assist the public in a courteous, professional, and effective manner. And whereas Carla Wesley always performed her duties with the intention of doing what was best for the citizens of Douglas County. And whereas Douglas County wishes to recognize Carla Wesley in her retirement after twenty years of dedicated service, now therefore be resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby recognizes Carla Wesley for her dedicated and outstanding service to the residents of Douglas County, and thankfully presents this resolution as testimony thereof dated this tenth day of April, twenty eighteen.
Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Kavanaugh, second by Commissioner Duda. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I'd just like to add my sentiments to Dan Ash's. Carla's been a shining example of a great public servant for a long time. She came on the clerk's staff for my brother Tom Kavanaugh, and has done an excellent job of living up to that office's motto of "we work for you" for the last twenty years. So, I just wanted to say thanks very much for your excellent service, and I wish her well in her retirement pursuits. Well deserved, thank you.
Commissioner Duda.
Thank you. This is one that I am particularly appreciative of, fond of, because Carla used to be in our office. We do know what a, what a great employee she is. It makes me feel old to find out she left in ninety-nine to go down to your office. I thought it was a little more recent than that, but absolutely, Carla is one of those great employees that we should all be so proud of. She represents Douglas County very well, and a pleasure to know her.
Thank you.
Please vote.
Motion passes, all present voting yes.
Item four, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any Board of Commissioners-related items that are not officially listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none, we'll go to committee discussion and action. Letter A, Finance Committee. Item one is the budget report. Commissioner Boyle.
As submitted, I think we have a calendar out, don't we, Joe, on when things are going and starting, so if you have any questions about it, let us know.
Thank you. Item B is Administrative Services Committee. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
We had a committee hearing last week on the progress on the public safety bond. You heard this morning from Dr. Foxall relative to the completion of Phase One, and we're moving ahead with Phase Two there. We have a scheduled hearing for Tuesday, April seventeenth, where we'll hold a preliminary budget hearing on public property, and another update on the public safety bond progress and other matters. Open to the public, and I think this is Tuesday, April seventeenth, following the county board meeting in room nine oh three.
Okay. Thank you. Item E is criminal justice. The minutes from the March twenty-second, twenty eighteen meeting. Commissioner Boyle.
I want to make a comment about the, Ashley, she's not here, but the excellent skills that we have in taking these notes. I've read through them, and I hope all commissioners will take time to look at these notes. It's a good, very excellent and accurate summary of what took place at the meeting. And there's some action items in here, too, that are particularly dealing with the healthcare of inmates and so forth, that I'll be bringing back after I talk, get it cleared with you, Mr. Chair, and put those items on the agenda. So, I really appreciate the work the Council does, it's really incredible, and we're very fortunate to have her working with us. So, I hope everybody will read these, and let me know if there's anything you wanted to discuss further.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item G is Human Resource Committee. Item one is the Weekly Personnel Report, as submitted. Item two is Legislative Issues, and I'd just like to note under there, in having a conversation with our lobbyist Sean Kelly, I'd just like to bring up to the board and have everybody give me some feedback. I talked to Sean about trying to get ahead of the curve with this next transition of senators, but also based on what happened with some jail legislation. I, I've talked to him and asked you all to give some feedback on, starting this summer before that schedule picks up campaigning, to see if we can host the candidates and existing senators down at the jail, to kind of go over that particular item, but just give them a briefing on that place, let them walk around and go from there. And then also, too, regarding the juvenile justice piece for years, at least as far as I can have been here, there's been somebody familiar with, in the county, familiar with what's going on here, whether it's been Senator Ashford at the time, or Lathrop to now Senator Chris. It seems that that role is going to be passed on to Senator Vargas, from my understanding, and so I've talked to Sean about trying to host a session here with him to get him familiar on our juvenile issues and build that bridge, so if there's any feedback, please give it to me, but I'm just putting that here out in the public, so you know the conversation. Commissioner Boyle.
I think that's a great idea. I brought this up once before, and I'd like to follow through on it. I think it'd be a good idea, and I'm not sure of the timing, I'll defer to others, but I think it'd be a good idea to try to get quite a few of the senators in that we can. There's already been a, there was already another crack made about Douglas County about apportionment. And the crack was that if, you know, if we're not careful and get these census figures right, and, and keep people who are not citizens, if we keep them off the census rolls, then it will, you know, give us more representation. And instead, if we're not careful, you know, we're going to be, a rural county is going to lose a legislative seat to Douglas County. You know, I mean, it's just a constant misunderstanding of our relationship, and it's always been pretty hostile, we all know that. What I'd like to do is get some state senators in, particularly those from the western part of the state, and rural senators, and have them come on in and spend some time, bring a significant other, and, you know, we have a, I think all of us were contacted to meet with the Visitors Bureau. I have anyway, and I was supposed to meet them today at one, but we're not going to be able to do that. But get them in and have them in here in town to show them some things, and also the jail, and the Health Center, and the mental health operations, the whole thing. I think we need to let them know that we're doing a lot of things, frankly, that they should probably be doing, and we need, we need some support, not criticism. So, I'd like to, I'd like to work on that, and then I'll clear it all with you.
Please.
Thanks.
With that, any other comments, Leslie, it was. Seeing none. With that, we do have a need for an executive session for the purposes of negotiation and litigation. And how we're going to do this is, we're going to go in an executive session with the, for the Board of Commissioners. Then we'll turn it over to Commissioner Duda to call the Board of Trustees meeting together. Then we'll go into executive session for there, and there's a matter that we have for the trustees to do all at once. So, is there a motion to go in the executive session for the Board of Commissioners for the purpose of negotiation and litigation? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Vote yes.
Motion passes, all present voting yes.
And again, the Board of Commissioners is going into executive session for negotiations, litigations. Turn it over to Commissioner Duda. Call the order and go in the executive session.
Call the meeting to order, and we will adjourn into executive session for the Board of Trustees for personnel and litigation and negotiations.
Most approve.
Okay, questions or comments?
So, what, I'm confused, what's going on? We're going into executive session as the commissioners?
The trustees, no.
And they go handling both at once.
Okay, they're, okay.
But I need to separate them out. So, you want?
Well, I mean, we've done it in the past, we've separated them, we haven't gone, like, I remember one time there was a...
I know, but based on, we'll have to talk about it, but based on, we talked before, this is how we're going to handle it, so we can talk before.
That's fine, that's fine. Alright, so we're going as an executive session for Board of Commissioners and Health Center Board of Trustees.
Yep. And going to executive session.
I believe so. So, so do we vote again?
For Board of Trustees and Executive Session.
Yeah, that's we vote.
Okay. Although, we typically do a roll call for the Health Center trustees, so I'll, I'll do that. Commissioner Morgeson.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Craft. Commissioner Morgan is absent. Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
And actually, I don't, I apologize, Commissioner Duda, maybe I already said your name, but.
No, you didn't.
Chair Duda?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. You're good.
Alright, sorry, yes.
Alright. All right.
I'll sit here for the trust meeting in the second.
I agree, second.
Well, reconvene on the board of commissioners.
Whatever time that I'm with.
So you should come out and adjourn the trust meeting.
All right, and adjourn.
(laughing).
By Commissioners Boyle and Kraft.
Commissioner Duda, or sorry, I'm gonna do a roll call for the Health Center.
Okay, fine.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Rogers, and Chair Duda.
Yes.
All right, motion passes six out there.
And they're motion to reconvene and adjourn the board of commissioners meeting. So move, Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Kraft.
All right.
Please vote.
Yeah.
Thank you. Motion passes, all present voting yes.
Commissioner, did you want me to follow you or do this?